...informed of actions during this meeting. I would ask that all participants remotely attending this meeting, please state your name for identification purposes each time you speak throughout the meeting and your address. At this time, we will have a roll call for board members. David Thorne. Karen.
Karen Langton.
All right, Scott?
Scott Furcler, present.
And Jason?
Jason Santos, present.
Okay, great. I believe we're gonna continue, or I'm sorry, we're going to continue a site plan review for Jeffrey Zimer for eighty-seven one twenty-five Jeffrey Avenue. I believe we have Joyce here.
Yes, Joyce Hastings from GLM Engineering. We had continued this from the last meeting to give Karen an opportunity to write those certificate of action and to have everybody have an opportunity to review.
I have had a chance to review it. Scott, have you?
Yes, I have had a chance.
Okay, great.
I don't have any questions, Dave.
Okay, great. Scott?
Yeah, no, no questions.
Okay, all right. Okay, and I don't either. At this moment, would somebody like to make a motion to this? To approve this?
I will make a motion to accept the site plan review for Jeffrey Zimer eighty-seven and one twenty-five Jeffrey Ave.
Okay, Karen, it's made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Scott has seconded, okay. All in favor or yes? No? I guess we'll start with Scott.
Aye.
All right, Karen?
Aye.
And David? Aye. Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Good night. Have a good night. Next is approvals not required subdivisions?
There are none.
There are none, okay. Okay, well, we have, we have about nine minutes before I can open this continued, the next continued hearing. So unfortunately, we can't open it up until seven, so we have about nine minutes. Is there something else that anybody we need to go through in terms of? And Josh should be here shortly.
Did we approve the minutes from last meeting?
I don't believe you've got some. I don't think I did them in time for your packet.
Oh, okay. I'm thinking, trying to think of fill in that nine minutes.
Sorry.
Nope.
False alarm.
May twentieth, June third, June seventeenth, unless you wanted to amend June.
I'm okay with those. I didn't know if anybody else had anything that they would, in terms of those dates, those dates sound okay. May twentieth, June third, and June seventeenth. I also wanted to mention, and I believe I can mention this, a town meeting is next, starting next Monday. And for everybody that's on this call, I just want people to know, there's nothing at all in regards to five-five-five at town meeting, just so people know, there's nothing. So, just thought I'd pass that along. I know there's a lot gonna be going on at town meeting, but I just thought I would mention that.
So sweet.
So, let's see, we've got six minutes. Do we want to go out any further than June seventeenth for a meeting, or does that seem like that's a good amount of time?
Um, we're gonna have a new member, so you can...
Oh, okay.
I didn't want to wait in terms of scheduling, but...
All right, okay. That's right.
I think the last time you were talking about trying to do one meeting in July and one in August.
Okay.
We can stagger.
Thought like maybe we could pencil in if this works for already on the call, like July fifteenth and then August twelfth, just so we have something penciled in. And then that gets us two weeks pretty much out into September to start with our two a month in the fall. I mean, it's obviously flexible and can change, but I just, I always feel comfortable when we have something penciled in so that as we're in meetings and we need to move, right, to continue something that we're able to at least have a target date to go toward and have a discussion.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Karen, what was the August suggestion?
Twelve.
Okay.
Because then that gets us just like two weeks out to September second, you know, like we would have enough time to pull that in. And then we would have enough time to be doing at least two meetings in September.
Okay.
Because I, I mean, I would like to stay away from like Yom Kippur if possible, and that's the sixteenth of September.
Yep. So maybe the twenty-third?
Yeah. If everybody agrees on that.
September twenty-third? Okay. I'm okay with those. I don't know, Scott is okay, and Jason?
I have no objections.
Okay. Jay is on the call some more, I guess. Okay, it's seven o'clock now, so I think we will continue the public hearing for CRG Integrated Real Estate Solutions, five-five-five Hopping Brook Road. I just need to read a quick couple of things here. Now, we'll be asking those that want to speak throughout the forum, raise their hands. If you're dialing in by phone, you can press nine in case you want to speak. It's your turn to speak, you will be asked to unmute. For those on a computer, tablet, smartphone, will receive the message of unmute. If you're calling in by phone when you are announced by select, excuse me, Planning Board, you will need to press star six to unmute the phone. If you are unable to find the raised hand feature, send a chat to the Town of Hollis requesting you speak, the Planning Board will be notified. This is, I guess, the first thing would be, what time, if there's a Planning Board member that would like to, what time would we like to end the meeting tonight? I don't know if there's any suggestions. Anybody have thoughts in terms of time?
Well, it looks like we have a presentation, is that correct?
Yeah.
And we have a response probably being made by David. David, is that correct? So, if we put a timeline on those things, right? So if the presentation was twenty minutes, David, could you get your work done in twenty minutes?
Yes, I believe, probably won't take that long, but...
Okay, so that gets us to forty minutes, so, and I'd say that we should be able to be done rather quickly, don't you think? So how about, what are we thinking, other board members?
I don't know. I don't know if...
Karen, I think you're probably on the right, I think you're probably on the right track, Karen. I, you know, sounded like we had some new information to hear about, and I think you're probably, you know, I think you're probably on the right track. Scott, what are your thoughts?
So, it looks like Scott might be having trouble because he's in the chat, so...
Well, why don't we suggest nine o'clock?
Yeah, why don't we say nine o'clock? However, I'm hopeful we'll be even earlier than that.
Okay, all right.
So, I would propose nine o'clock.
Okay, all right. All right, and for nine o'clock, do I have, do I have a second, if that's what you're proposing?
Jason's second.
Okay, Jason's second. I guess we'll start with you, Jason. All right, Scott, I don't know if you're back?
He said he can't, he's having trouble connecting, he just...
Does he currently get in on his phone? Aye.
All right, and Josh? Okay, all right, and David, aye, okay, all right. I guess at this point, I think we'll, I'm not sure who, I think, is Peter presenting? I'm not sure who's presenting this evening for CRG, or I'm not sure who's starting it off.
Good evening, Peter Bemis here. I know Chip Nylan was going to start the proceeding, so I'll, I saw him a moment ago, so I'll give him a moment. You need to unmute Chip.
I'm sorry, I thought we were doing the site plan first. No, what are we gonna do first?
Okay, I'm prepared to begin.
Okay.
Great, thank you. So would I be able to share screen, Karen, please?
Yes.
Okay, so the first slide I have here is the illustration to present the neighborhood that Hopping Brook site that we're working on here finds itself in. The lower portion of the screen here is the western limits of that industrial zone land, Midway being the boundary here to the west, to the south, continues to the south, and it comes up here along the east, just west of Highland Street, comes back along the northerly boundary, which was the Penn Central Rail Line back when it was originally accepted, and now it is a bike path, I believe, town control. And our site is located right here, about in the area where this cul-de-sac was proposed back when it was initially developed. This area represents about nine hundred acres, and the area of Hopping Brook Park is about one-third of that nine hundred acres. The proposal is our CRG building, approximately eight hundred thousand square feet, and it's forty feet tall. As we presented in our submittal, we withdrew the zoning variance for the height, so we will limit our height to the allowed height of forty feet. The layout materials plan shown here, showing the entire site, we are located again on eighty acres. Twenty-three percent of the site is covered by building, the allowable would be forty percent. The floor area ratio is point-two-three, less than half the allowable. The front yard setback here is four hundred and fifteen feet, the side yard here is two hundred feet, the side yard here is three hundred and fifty-five feet, and the setback here to the rear is fifteen hundred and ninety-three feet. We're showing four hundred and three parking spaces, of which fourteen are handicapped accessible, and those are distributed on both the north and south portions of the building. We also have a requisite bike, bike storage areas, both north and south, and EV parking spaces are also provided. We have a hundred and sixty loading docks, of which eighty are on each side of the building, and we have two hundred and seventy-eight trailer slots shown on the plan. The utilities that serve this site, shown on this illustration, again, showing the entire site, we do have a water main that will loop the building, that will be twelve inch. We also provide for a twelve-inch water main that will connect Hopping Brook Road to the Holliston Woods property, which will allow the town to also have a water main loop, providing for the municipal benefit of a water circulation that doesn't currently exist at this end of town. We have an onsite soil absorption system located in the northern portion of the site here. We have electric telephone and communication services at Hopping Brook Road, those will be extended into the site to serve the building's need. We have stormwater collected, treated, and processed in two locations. One is on the north end of our site, shown in this area here, and the other is on our western flank here, located just offsite. You can actually see where the discharge is to the fore bay in this picture. For grading and drainage, generally, the site provides for no greater than two and a half percent in the loading docks on both the sides of the building. Parking lots do not exceed five percent, our driveways do not exceed eight percent in grade. We have a perimeter thirty-foot-tall berm, it is going along our southern, eastern, and Landscaping plan does reflect trees around the entire perimeter of the site through our driveway system. We've got a hundred and thirty maples, a hundred and sixty-five spruce, and we have varieties of other trees and shrubs and pine needles to support the landscaping plan. The more important feature would be the thirty-foot-tall berm we have, there's an evergreen screen that would go across the top of that. Oh, sorry, it's taking a while to load. You'll have to give it one moment, if you would. The lighting plan is the next sheet, again, showing the overall site, this is a photometric that assures that the lighting levels do not exceed, offset to the boundary, they are all set at fifteen-foot-high, whether they're on the building or on the perimeter of the site, and they are DocSky compliant as well. There is a standalone stormwater management plan for both construction and long-term maintenance. The O and M for those items are listed on the sheet so that it would allow the plan set to include explicit instructions to the contractor for construction of the project. We updated all of our cross-sections for the site, with the building now being at forty feet. The previous submittal, it had the fifty-two-foot-high, and we went through each property, so just to go through each of the sheets, it was going from Kelly to Reagan to Meconeli on the first plan. The second one was Kildrick, Gilugi, Duchemin, De Michelle, and Sheen. And the third illustration was Barry, Carlisle, Jacoby, and Affinery, and those were the abutters that we had at the time of our initial application. And in each case, the visual from the building to the, from the residence to the building, there would be no visibility of the building. And the last piece of supporting data that was submitted was the stormwater calculations for five-five-five Hopping Brook. The CMG peer review comments were addressed. The first report was basically general site comment, zoning bylaw issues, site plan and special permit items, which included aesthetics, lighting, landscaping, screening, stormwater management, access and traffic, utilities and fiscal analysis. Each one of those items was addressed individually. And then there was a second peer review letter that discussed general engineering and drainage design items, and it included the ten mass DEP stormwater standards. Again, all of those items were addressed, and there's been no further communication to date with CMG. We do expect that we would get that, and David's here, and I will let him speak to those items. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Planning Board members. My name's David Feist with CMG Engineering Services. We're the peer review consultant. We did receive a week ago, the revised set of plans dated four thirteen twenty-one, in addition to the stormwater report. And then this week, we did get copies of the stamped landscape plans from Peter as well. So we haven't had enough time to do a full, complete review of the revised set. However, just going through, we did identify there's still, still a fair amount of missing and some other information that's gonna, technical information that's gonna need to be addressed with another round of peer review comments. Again, I don't think I want to go into the details at this level. The other thing to note is there's a number of comments as well where the, you know, the applicant, they're asking for, you know, portions of the work to be deferred as conditions of approval, which again, related to the actual design of the stormwater and the site itself. Some of those items, we'll have to probably discuss in more detail with EDC to work out the technical, you know, how they will respond to our second round of comments. At this stage, you know, probably, you know, if there's questions from the board about the design, I could probably answer them. But as opposed, I don't know, where we haven't had enough time to review the new revised set, I don't think I want to go into detail on each item.
Okay. I didn't know if there was any board members. Was there something else you had to say, or I'm sorry?
Oh, no, yeah, it would just be that if needed, I do have like, just like a summary based on, we did a zoning and planning board regulation review, as well as stormwater, and I do, can hit some of the high points if needed.
Okay. Do you have anything you'd like to ask him? Okay. Scott, is there anything you'd like to address?
Um, not, not at this time, it's tough without the whole, oh, sorry, I have some technical difficulties here. Yeah, it's tough without all of the information at this point. I, yeah, no questions right now.
Okay.
David, David Feist, just so that I'm clear, so there was, there's a revised, revised work regarding the traffic, and it is not something that you have fully reviewed and comprehend right now, is that it?
Correct, and actually, the traffic engineer is a separate part of the project. We reviewed the site design and the stormwater design, and again, that's the revised set of plans and stormwater calcs we received a week ago, so we need some additional time to do a complete review.
Sounds reasonable, okay. No, I, I mean, with that, I, there's nothing to ask, you know? I think once you have a full grasp on everything, I think we can ask away. Thank you.
All right, Karen?
Yeah, hi. I actually echo the same sentiment. I really would like to hear, and I understand that there hasn't been enough time, it's just responding to your statement, David, that I would want to be able to hear David's comments before I can respond to anything else, that's what we're waiting for. So at this time, I thank Peter for his presentation, and I will wait to ask any further questions, and I would like time to digest the information that we just saw.
Yeah, thank you. Peter, I guess, was that it on your presentation, or was there somebody else that was, would like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, Chip Nylan, good evening.
Good evening.
In connection with the submission last week, we provided you several documents. We provided you with a request for an amendment to the site plan approval. We provided you with a request for an amendment to the land disturbance plan. We submitted answers to the questions that had been posed by the general public, and we also provided you, at the request of Town Council, with a summary of the mitigation that we have provided all along. And so, we thought that tonight, you know, since we've been doing things on a piecemeal basis, that it might be appropriate for us to visit where the board is in terms of having to make the five findings in order to issue the special permit, and to walk you through the mitigation that we have offered throughout, again, on a piecemeal basis, but in a concentrated manner, so... So you can understand exactly what our position is, that we meet the, the five tests. And I do recognize that with respect to the stormwater, that that is still in, in limbo at this point. But we believe, given the amount of property that we have available to us, the slopes and the engineering ability, that that's. Probably going to be something that we are going to be able to take care of and finalize fairly quickly. After David has a chance to take a look at the calculations. So I, I thought we could go forward and provide you with a summary of the, the mitigation as it relates to. As it relates to the project. I'd also state that I asked Peter to put together the zoning map because. While neighborhood is included in the special permit granting authority. In terms of determining whether a project is in harmony or affects the neighborhood, neighborhood's not defined in your regulations. I'm sure town council will give you some advice, I think town council probably reads the same cases that I do. That indicate that the, the neighborhood, we believe is the industrial park. And it's, because it's defined in the cases as, you know, near the environs. Which would be within, you know, the proximity of the, of the project. That's why we've been looking at what the impacts are, even though we have been very careful to. Mitigate impacts to our neighbors in Medway. I think it's pretty clear that the zoning by law protects the residents of Holliston. We have, we've taken great pains, spent a lot of money in order to mitigate impacts to Medway. But we believe that the neighborhood definition is going to relate to the, the town of Holliston. So with that, I think I would just have Peter walk through the, the document that we provided to you, which outlines the mitigation. In terms of traffic, in terms of noise, construction and, and general mitigation.
Again, thank you, and Mr. Chairman, I'm going to share screen again, please.
Yes.
I think that's coming through, okay, let me, let me just make it a little smaller. I'm assuming that's showing up okay on everyone's screen. So again, this is part of the submittal that Mr. Nylan had provided you with, and I've just updated it to kind of shorten it a bit here. So first item was traffic, so the standards rules to be met, no adverse impacts to level of service. Compliance with section sixty-one findings, seventy to eighty-five percent reduction from the original traffic projections. The objectives, keep the traffic impacts off Washington Street in downtown. Keep traffic at thirteen ten ADT for this project. Monitoring driveway, Washington and South Streets, enforcement of the project ADT. The mitigation, most important part. Signalization developed pursuant to sixty-one findings ensure that gaps on Washington Street can be presented. Internal signage on Hopping Brook Road to keep trucks off of downtown road and prohibit truck traffic on South Street. Wayfinding signs approved by the planning board to direct traffic to the industrial park. Third-party monitoring, grid smart or other MDM program. Concepts that they could come up with, planning board to monitor and enforce the thirteen ten ADT. Lease provisions include thirteen ten ADT and traffic travel restrictions for all tenants of CRG. Copy of the special permit to be attached to all leases. Conditions for the planning board to be attached to the special permit. Compliance with sixty-one findings included in special permit. Funding and completion of signalization and roadway improvements per section sixty-one findings. Proposed traffic signage at Hopping Brook Road and South Street installed prior to construction commencement. Wayfinding signs posted in direct traffic away from South Street. Lease conditions include thirteen ten ADT with copy of special permit requirements for compliance with traffic routes and enforcement. Traffic monitoring on site reviewed by third party within six months after occupancy permit at driveway location. Traffic monitoring in South Washington and South Streets within six months after occupying warehouse reviewed by third party. Signal adjustment based on monitoring to signalization to provide a gap in traffic similar to today or greater. Limit truck loading to six, one hundred and sixty docks on site. Limit trailer spaces to two hundred and seventy-eight on site. Limit parking spaces to four hundred and three on site. Traffic demand package provided to the planning board. Submit data semi-annually with a monitoring report to planning board with the following information. Traffic operations including vehicle queuing and level of service at Washington Street. Comparison of the measured versus estimated traffic reference in special permit. The planning board may pursuant to MGL, chapter forty-four, fifty-three G, retain a professional engineering firm, professional traffic engineering firm. At the expense of the applicant to review and comment on the monitoring report. Special permit must be attached to all leases including restrictions of thirteen ten ADT and prohibit truck traffic on South Street. South Street restrictions must be provided to all trucking vendors of the tenant. Noise. Standards do not exceed Holliston and Medway by law provisions for noise. Do not exceed the DEP decibel standards, no idling in excess of five minutes, no jake breaking. Objectives, physical challenge changes to facility for the site to reduce noise. Changes in configuration for daily use when appropriate, no jake breaking, reduce noise during the evening hours. The mitigation. Berm thirty feet in height prior to occupancy, south, east and north of the project. Commence during initial construction phase. Fence eight foot prior to occupancy, installed during construction phase. Vegetation installed prior to occupancy, evergreen trees as screen with a hundred and sixty-four trees. Traffic configuration established with north side guard shed. Building buffer of three hundred and fifty-five feet from the building to property line. Prioritize use of front bays during overnight hours when feasible to further mitigate noise impacts. The conditions, berm fence constructed with initial site construction phase. Evergreen buffer, monitoring of noise at the property line. No jake breaking built into the lease. Monitoring six months following occupation, if exceedances must be mitigation to meet the decibel levels. Three hundred and fifty-five foot setback established from the building. The construction standards, compliance with site plan approved for dates and times. Meet with planning board staff prior to site plan work. The berm first, fence, vegetation buffer, stormwater managed during construction. The objectives, sequence the work, notice of planning board decisions to all contractors. Communication with planning board staff on periodic basis for updates, weekly during site work, monthly during construction. The mitigation, precision of the fifty-two foot variance request. Construction work times, Monday through Friday, seven to six, Saturday, seven to one. Road configuration internally, counterclockwise motion. Noise abatement during construction, loop municipal water system, stormwater management system installed. Bike path, rapid flash beacons paid for by the applicant. Compliance with site plan and as-built required prior to occupancy. Fiscal impacts, no additional municipal services required for this project. A loop water line will enhance municipal water delivery, it's not present today. The property tax revenue with the accessory estimated for one point four two eight to one point seven one million dollars annually. CRG is willing to guarantee a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar annualized tax revenue for the first five years related to tenant. FFE, property and vehicle excise tax. The FFE is fixtures, furniture and equipment. So that will be additional monies that the town could take as a guarantee in the first five years. There's no cost from this project to the Holliston school systems, there's a construction and a long-term employment opportunity with this project. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Peter, so just a couple of items, Mr. Chairman, before you ask, before you entertain any questions. I think the, the most, most important issue probably is enforcement, but I do want to point out for purposes of meeting the bylaw requirements. There are no waivers that are requested, and we're meeting all the dimensional requirements of the, of the bylaw. And we have spent more than six months answering every question that the board has posed and the public has posed. And I think when we put that list together, it's a pretty impressive list of. Meeting the obligations under the bylaw as well as making sure that we're mitigating impacts. We're, we're fortunate to have a substantial site here of close to a hundred acres. So it gives us an ability to stay away from wetlands, to provide a significant buffer to structures and to residences. And I think that's, and it also gives us an ability for purposes of Title V as well as for stormwater. With respect to enforcement, and I know, I, I think Frank is on the line, if the most important piece that he has explained. Is that when you put the thirteen ten ADT in the, as a condition of the permit, which is a condition of the lease. And to break that is a breach of the lease. It sends a signal early on in the process that this is going to be a warehouse, this is not going to be a fulfillment center. We heard an argument before that if with fifty-two feet, it was going to be a fulfillment center because it was a cube building. We've taken that off to, we've, we've told you number, number of times, it's not going to be a fulfillment center, it can't be a fulfillment center. And that's where the enforcement takes place. So we're not looking for the planning board to do the enforcement here of the thirteen ten ADT. We believe that institutionally it will take care of itself because nobody is going to rent this facility. Unless they can meet that thirteen ten. There's no, there's nobody that's going to take on the town or this landlord in that, in that respect. So, you know, we're, we're available to answer any questions. I would also like to say, we did hear you with respect to the nighttime activities. And depending upon the tenant, and Frank can answer questions about this. To the extent that we can, you know, prioritize the bays so that we're not using the bays, you know, late at night that are facing the. Facing the residences, we, we will, we will do that, and that's why we say it's where feasible. We really can't answer the question how we're going to do that until the tenant comes on board, but that will clearly also be a part of the lease. So we've demonstrated from the beginning that we are ready, willing and able, this applicant has put his money where his mouth is. In terms of the amount that he has spent for designing the project, for moving it, for building the berm. The amount of money that, the tax increase for property taxes as well as the guarantee that Peter talked about with respect to furniture fixtures and equipment. This will be a good project for the industrial district, it'll be a good project for the town. And we're, we're here to answer any questions with respect to the mitigation package you may have.
I didn't know if town council had anything.
Well, I, I've been taking notes on, and I, I've read the mitigation package, Mr. Chairman. And thinking about some of the enforcement stuff that I can address with the board when we're, when we're actually deliberating on this. There, as Chip said, that it's the more difficult side of the drafting of a decision here. But I think it, to the extent that the board would be willing to approve this on. Some of these conditions as well as any other conditions that the board discusses, there's usually a way to, to do it. It would be, it'll be a complex network of devices, but it's conceivable. I, I did want to know, without getting argumentative with Mr. Nylan, I don't think this is the place for that, that. But I don't agree with him on his definition of the neighborhood in that the board can and is in some part obligated to consider. Impacts to a neighborhood over the line in Medway as well as the. The mitigation efforts by CRG with respect to those impacts of which there are many. So I think that is a fair item of discussion, so little, I just wanted to make sure that the board is aware that I, I don't exactly follow. What Chip is saying there, but I'm not sure we have to have that debate right now because I think the. The project's gonna fall and rise on its merits before this board. Without the lawyers having to engage in that kind of semantic debate.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's fair, and I would say the point that I was trying to make, Jay, perhaps I didn't make it very well is. Regardless of where I may believe the legal position is, we've taken steps at every instance. To provide mitigation to those Medway residents. So whether or not they're part of the neighborhood or legally or not, we certainly have addressed that throughout this process.
Okay. I didn't know if there was any, I guess we could start with Scott and see if you had any questions.
Um, yeah, I had a couple of questions, actually. Attorney Nylan brings up an interesting point with the, the thirteen ten vehicle trips a day. So he's saying this building can't be used as a fulfillment center. Based on those thirteen ten vehicle trips. I guess I would like to also see as part of the lease. I'd like to see it kind of spell out specific activities that would not be allowed to happen on the site. I guess what I'm thinking is the type of activities that would distinguish a distribution center or a fulfillment center from a warehouse. Like, for example, if he's saying it's not a fulfillment center, then I'd like to see as part of the lease, something saying like. This facility cannot service end users. If they're saying it's not a distribution center, I'd like to see this, this facility cannot service retail locations, I mean, something like that. So just, just to kind of memorialize what we're talking about, that it's not a DC, it's not an FC. I'd like to see that as part of the lease, so I don't know what Attorney Nylan and the applicant would think about that.
I, I mean.
Go ahead, Frank. My immediate reaction is, you know, the more restrictions placed, you know, placed on the use within the building, that the hard is to lease at the end of the day. And I, I would say that if this does happen and we build a big building, you know, nobody wants a white elephant, right? A building that's constructed and not leased, it's not producing any tax revenue, it's quiet, but it's, it's certainly a white elephant. So for me, the mechanism that really dictates the use is the limitation of traffic, right? It's the one-three-one-zero ADT that really dictates what's going to go on in here. Now, if I am forced to preclude particular activities that may be synonymous with, I don't know, delivering to end users. That's going to severely restrict my, my ability to lease up this building. And my thought is, if those particular activities are happening within the building and the negative externalities are kept to a minimum, i.e. The thirteen ten is maintained, what does it matter anyway? So, you know, I would be, I would be. That would be very concerning for us, you know, we, we certainly don't want to make an investment of this size. If it limits our ability to lease the building. And again, there are enough limitations that were already proposed here that would ultimately be imposed as conditions that we think would, would us, you know, really serve that purpose.
The only thing I would add is that retail is not authorized under, under zoning under this definition, so.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying use it as a retail location, but I mean, service stores, like if this were target, for example. I mean, they would, stuff would come into this building and it would go out to their various stores in the area. That would, in my opinion, make this a distribution center versus a warehouse.
Right, yeah, and I, I think that.
Well, I, I, I would say that, you know, somebody like that would be one of your less intensive uses. If you think about how often trucks come and go when, when they're servicing retail stores. You're going out to, in effect, six customers a day as opposed to very many. So again, that would be very problematic for us.
And I guess, just second question, different topic, but just to talk about enforcement. I like the fact that we're talking about it, but I guess what, what enforcement are we proposing? I mean, I guess it's difficult to. I don't know, I, I, I guess, I guess I'd like to see the board have the authority to potentially. Temporarily spend the special permits and spend operations on the site. spend operations on the site for a day or two days or whatever to, you know, try to serve as a means of enforcement. I guess to me, that that makes more sense than some type of fine or something. I mean, that's, that's tough to, that's tough to track, it's tough to enforce. I guess I'd like to also hear you, you guys' opinion on that.
Yeah, I think I think enforcement requires a couple of things. I think first of all, it requires communication with all of our vendors, the tenant and the customer, so they know what is expected of them. Second is that you take that and you put it into the leases. So not only are you telling them that, but it's in there in in writing. And then third is that we monitor to see, you know, how we're doing in getting that accomplished. There are a number of issues here. In addition to the 1310, we've got the no right turn coming out of Hopping Brook Road, you know, so there, there are a number of ways to to monitor that. At I think we have to do it at our driveway as because there's other traffic obviously associated with the with a park. And then we're obviously have to do it at Washington Street to make sure that we have the gaps that are there now for level service. And then finally, we want to make sure that the trucks aren't taking a right, you know, down towards South Street. So, you know, we're, we're willing to do our part and pay for that monitoring and make sure that we take care of it internally with the leases. It would be a breach of the lease if they didn't comply.
But if a truck does take a turn down South Street, what then?
Well, if if we're aware of it, then we, you know, we're going to make the tenant aware of that, what the obligation is, and that would be a breach. And that, that's something that will work into the lease in terms of, you know, what the what the consequences are. But it's most important is, and we're going to have signs there that state, you know, no right turn. And we just have to keep monitoring and keep pressing them and take actions against the vendor if if they don't conform.
Scott, let me comment too here a little bit, that you're right to be focusing on this. Obviously, fines of a maximum of $300 a day, which is all the law would provide, aren't, don't carry a lot of weight, and that we'd probably be looking for the kinds of enforcement mechanisms that are more injunctive in nature. There are pitfalls, though, and I've discussed this before, that it's difficult to enforce things like no left turn, because someone literally would have to be there at all times to be doing that. That's obviously not going to happen. Certainly in the first year or so, we're going to have more robust monitoring. Otherwise, these things can be very difficult to enforce. Now, the difficulty in enforcement is one factor that you have to consider when you're, when you're weighing whether or not we have the requisite municipal resources to to manage this project. But it also, there are opportunities, and there is language that we can provide with a series of warnings and then more strict actions after that, in in terms of a hierarchy of enforcement mechanisms that could theoretically, for more egregious violations, go all the way up to a cease and operations. Obviously, that's the high watermark in any kind of enforcement. Those are things that I think are going to be interesting and difficult discussions when, when I sit with you and the board, and we try and brainstorm. If you're otherwise inclined to approve the project, I think we're really going to have to put our, our thinking caps on and make sure we do something that's both fair, as well as strict enough to get the result that we want.
Thanks, Jay. Appreciate that. If that's, yeah, I'm good. Nothing else for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason.
Scott, you, I think, hit the nail on the head, as usual. And thank you, Jay, for the follow-up discussion. Yeah, I think, I think we've got quite a lot to think about. And, yeah, I guess I look forward to deliberations with with the board. And that's all I have. Thank you very much, David.
Thank you. Josh? You're fine. Okay. All right. And Karen?
Yeah. First, I was happy to hear Jay say what he said about neighborhoods, because I immediately started flipping through the master plan and immediately started flipping through aesthetics. So thank you. You allowed me to stop that in-the-moment research. I think that the only, I mean, I'm going to list just a few things that are in my head. They've been in my head the whole time. You know, your mitigation is easy to read, and it was easy to follow. I, I'm not really sure it was necessary to read it to us. As far as traffic goes, I believe that the select board specifically asked when it comes to a traffic light that many intersections, I think it may have been 13, that are studied. So I don't think we're done with traffic, actually. There's been conversation back and forth about the refueling plan that has not been provided. And I'm assuming there will be vehicles on site that aren't approved to be on roads, but will have to have gasoline or diesel put into them. This still does not get addressed. The 24/7/365, that's a sticking point. So what I hear when we approach, as Scott just did, conditions that are more specific, it's, I'm interpreting your words as this is my best offer on the table. I could be interpreting those incorrectly. However, that's how I'm hearing it. I do have concerns over an area with which workers are going to take a break. Somebody working 11 to 7, 11:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. has awake hours. They have needs for food. They have needs for break. Where are they taking these? In park, in the parking lot, making noise that is a concern at 2 o'clock in the morning. And I, and I just don't feel that these things have been answered. So those are my sticking points. And I think you already know that they are. I've been consistent with stating them. So thank you.
Can we address a couple of those? And then Frank, you can address them as well. I think first, with respect to the 12 to 13 intersections, you're absolutely right. We received from MIPA and from DOT an approval to go forward with this facility with the 800,000 square foot warehouse. We have an agreement that once we're through this process, that we're going to go through the NPC as it relates to the entire property. But that that was not required to take place beforehand. And that's something that's going to take place afterwards. And we certainly will continue to look at those intersections. In terms of the the break room, and Frank can talk about this, his experience with these facilities is you don't have cafeterias. All you have are break rooms, because the, the employees who are, you know, working full time, they do take a break, they're vending machines, but they, they actually go into break rooms. So they're not going downtown or going outside to eat or anything else. There's no need for a, for a caf, for cafeteria. And Frank, you can address the other questions relative to operations.
Yeah, sure. As far as the refueling plan, I think we've said before that we're not going to have any diesel storage, or maybe a little bit of diesel storage for a generator, very arbitrary amounts. But we're not going to have a fueling station on site. And the reason why we've never done one of those is, number one, as a landlord, I'm concerned about environmental issues. But number two, we just don't need it, right? So as far as what's called a jockey truck or something on site that would be housed there, we did say that we would, we would agree to having those electric, right? We have, I think there's already mandate imposed by the site plan approval that we have charging stations for cars. We can do a couple for for jockey trucks. And again, I think I've also said that if we do have a jockey truck, there'd be one or two of them, max, on site. So there wouldn't be a need for any of those. As far as trucks not being stored on site, I mean, it's double-edged sword, right? I mean, I would accept a restriction if you said, hey, look, no trucks can be stored on site that require fuel. But again, that that runs into the excise tax issue that somebody thought might have been more of a benefit for the town. So I'm willing to accept any condition imposed with respect to that. With respect to the comment of what was, what was stated as our best and final offer on the table, I don't think, we haven't said that at all. As a matter of fact, every time we come here, as a matter of fact, every time we adjourn, we group, we regroup as a team, and we think to ourselves, you know, what else can we do, right? We're constantly racking our brains to say, what else can we do here? You know, and manifestation of that is just us kind of popping up and saying, you know what? We don't need the clear height, right? We had a variance granted by the EPA. If it's really a problem, we don't need it. As far as the excise tax issue, we're saying, you know, okay, you know, one of these last couple of meetings, I said, well, I don't know, you know, if what we can generate, but if it helps the situation, we can guarantee $250,000 a year relative to that particular excise tax issue. So we've been absolutely to the contrary. We've been bettering our offer every time we come to the table, just because we're trying to think, how much more can we mitigate the impacts of this site? What else can we do for the town? So I think what we've done so far should be an indication that we're always open. And we've said that. So and then what am I missing here, Chip? Anything?
24/7/365.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's something, if the comment was based on the 24/7/365 best offer on the table, I can't lease a building if it doesn't have this. Now, what I'll tell you is that the traditional operating warehouse usually has interior operations buzzing like bees in the bee hive at night inside. And then the activity outside usually happens when daylight comes. That's usually what happens. But if I've got a company like the ones that lease our buildings, the Fortune 50s, the Fortune 100s, and I show them a building that only has certain operating hours, they're looking at a half a building, and therefore half the rent, and it just doesn't become a viable investment, right? So everybody in this particular industry sector needs the ability to work 24/7/365. Now, with limitations imposed, yeah, I mean, we could consider things like that. But that's something that really would render this a nonstarter.
If you talk a little bit about the front bays, about how that works at night?
Yeah, I mean, so usually, in a cross-dock operation like this, usually have deliveries on one side, right, all day long. And on the other side of the building, there's usually, imagine trailers parked without a mechanized cockpit that pulls that trailer, but they're parked at the dock doors, and those are being loaded, you know, all through the night. So usually, there's an outgoing bunch of trailers that happen in the morning after those trailers have been loaded. So it's plausible that we could put into our lease that the tenants would make best efforts to make that, let's say, resident side of the building loading only during evening hours. That might be palatable. I just don't know. I'd have to query a number of the tenants and say, would you accept a building like this?
Okay.
I think that hits those Karen's questions. Thank you.
Okay. Karen, I think that was your, your last question, I believe?
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. I wanted to thank everybody. At this point, I think we're, I'm looking, I just wanted to ask town council again, right, his thoughts on this. We're, we're at a point now where we still have some information that has to be looked at. So in regards to going forward, just wanted to get your thoughts on that.
So in terms of, so I think there's some, still some outstanding stuff between Peter and Dave, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So we've got a few moving pieces. We obviously have a special permit. We obviously have a site plan, and we want to tie off any loose ends on land disturbance. So I think it makes sense to the board to sync all those together. The question would be, well, in terms of format, there's a, there's a few ways of doing this. You know, normally you close a hearing at a certain point, and then you deliberate. Some boards like to keep a hearing open during deliberation so that if there is a need for more material, say, for example, the board during deliberation comes up with a proposed condition that we hadn't thought of that might address an issue regarding traffic or noise or lighting or whatever, but it would really, but they just don't know how it would be shaped. And Frank and his team could say, well, I could show you how that would be done. That's fine with us. That kind of stuff would require additional plans or materials or narratives or reports or whatever to be delivered. So for a complex project like this, boards and applicants both sometimes feel that keeping the hearing open during deliberation makes a good amount of sense. On the other hand, some boards prefer, when they're ready to deliberate, to close a hearing on, say, so that they can do it without potential interruption. Now, I think this board does a good enough job that they could screen out the interruptions and develop protocol when they actually get into deliberation. But so that, those are the decisions you have. I think that's primarily with respect to the special permit, which will have the more significant discretionary conditions that you'll be discussing. Site plan approval is going to have more mechanical conditions as to what Dave suggests has to be implemented post-permit, and the kind of safeguards that we need on, on all of that stuff. So I'm less worried about having that process stay open. But again, it may make some sense to sync the hearings up to together. I know that site plan isn't even really truly a hearing, per se, but, but to perhaps wait, probably, and I spoke to Karen about this earlier, and was thinking it could go either way, listening to some of the loose ends in terms of what the conditions, the shape of the conditions could be. I guess I'd probably err on the side of recommending that even if we're largely done with taking testimony and evidence in this, that we keep the hearing open during deliberation. I suppose I'd like, I think Chip's and Frank's input on that might be somewhat valuable, too, because I think that when you get down to the end of a hearing, it's good to get an applicant's input on that. And Frank, this is somewhat peculiar to Massachusetts zoning and how we hold these hearings. I don't know how you see it elsewhere. So I don't know if you or Chip have any, have any thoughts on that.
I think that, I'll just go first, Frank. The reason that I wanted to put the mitigation package in front of the board so that you could take a look and see whether or not that meets the requirements that you were looking, looking for. I mean, we've had lots of, as I said, piecemeal discussions. This wasn't meant as a final and best offer at all. It was really meant to reflect the process that we've gone through to make this a better project, and how we've responded to everybody's requests and concerns. So, you know, I think we want to do whatever helps the deliberations if there's an advantage to, you know, we prefer to close, you know, when we can so that it can be managed. We've been at this for a long time. But to the extent that it's helpful in deliberations, if there are, you know, conditions that the board wants to can consider, wants us to think about, then, you know, there'd be a reason for us to, to continue perhaps one, one more meeting.
Now, I would agree with that. You know, contrary to popular belief, I am human, and I do sleep at night. So, you know, this is, this is getting to me. And I certainly, I certainly want to have a good project, right? I don't want to look back a year from now, two years from now, and think that, you know, we missed something. So sometimes those, those questions are very easily answered to the positive, right? I've been approached by boards with, you know, a particular issue where they say, hey, would you mind doing X? To which I respond, yeah, that's no problem at all. So, yeah, I mean, I am open to anything the board, you know, wants to do, and we'll keep on the process.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know if there were any board members that had any thoughts or suggestions. I see Karen. Well, it looks like you were.
Well, yes, I unmuted. I mean, we've heard the new information that Peter has presented. Frank has given us more to think about, and the Frank has given us more to think about and the way that he has clarified. Chip has done the same. We're waiting to hear back on what David says. So I, I think we should pick a date to continue this too. I, I, I think we should call it a night and think about what we've heard and come back and listen to some final presentations. And then at that meeting, after we've thought about it, decide how it is that we want to close it, if we want, or leave it open for deliberations or close it and, you know, think on our own however. But I think we can have a couple of weeks to even consider that. So at this time, I would feel confident continuing tonight's hearing.
One second. Okay. And well, Josh has seconded that. So I guess we'll start with Josh.
Sorry, but if you continue, you need to go to a date and a time card. I would suggest.
Want to go to?
June 3rd. Yeah, I was thinking June 3rd.
Okay.
Sounds good.
At 7 o'clock?
Should we just do 7:10 in case there's some, like what happened tonight? What if there's some short town business that we could handle before we go into a lengthy public hearing? If we did this more at like 7:10, then we could have fit in something without starting so much earlier. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so. So 7:10. So you have seconded that.
Before you move on, I'm just curious about your election, because I knew you were going to possibly have one member stepping off.
Yeah, you're not going to see my pretty face anymore, Peter.
What's that, Josh?
You're not going to see my pretty face anymore.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no. Believe me, believe me, it's been a good, been a good five years. I'm very fulfilled.
Well, I've enjoyed your interactions. So, but, but I, with that said, I, I'm concerned about your extension date you just provided.
No, I, I think, I think I'll be on for that, right?
Well, is that something that needs to be discussed at this moment to continue the hearing?
Well, I, I would say so because if he, if he can't, if he doesn't participate and doesn't deliberate, then you're down one member. You can't, the new member couldn't participate.
Well, that would be the case anyway, Chip. So because of, even if we, if he was gone, he couldn't deliberate, you lose the, lose it anyway. I know there's been some consideration of, of working with associate appointments, but we don't have anything on the agenda for that tonight. So I'm somewhat reluctant to, to discuss that. Karen and I have talked about that, a little bit of ways to preserve votes through the associate member process. But I, I don't think that the board is prepared to discuss it. And I don't think it would be appropriate, given the lack of an agenda item, to get too deep into that. I mean, the timing is the timing.
Well, could, could I propose then that you set a meeting before the election? In the event that you're able to resolve that, then it could be continued after, but we would have a meeting scheduled before the election?
But I'm still not sure what that would do. There's, it's unlikely that the, the board would, would vote then and there, because it's, given the timing with issuing some special permits. I think the, in speaking, and I don't want to speak for Karen and David, who will set the agenda, I think there's some interest. There is an interim meeting between now and the, and the third, where I think that there is some intention to discuss with the new, with the election, the position of associate members, which could help address some of this, in, in my view. And I certainly, none of this is done. A, a member that moves from a full to a, an associate member position potentially, wouldn't lose their vote, but it's not something that's been discussed by the board. So.
Would you have experience with that as town council where an associate member is vested with the right to, to vote on the matter?
I'd, I'd be, I'd be comfortable with it. Let's put it that way.
Not to put you on the spot, but.
You're not going to find a case on it, Chip. You know, you read the same statutes I read, so.
Welcome to democracy.
Okay.
Sounded like we had a motion for June 3rd. Sounded like we had a second and now you have a third.
Excellent. All right. All right. So we'll start with you, Jason. You're.
Aye.
All right. Josh?
Aye.
All right. Karen?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
And David, aye. All right. So we will be 7:10 on June 3rd. I thank everybody for their time tonight and hope everybody is safe and we appreciate your time this evening. Thanks so much. And at this point, would somebody, unless there's other things or anything else that we need to discuss?
Yes, just a reminder of town meeting that I think you reminded everyone at the start of the meeting.
Yep. For those that have mentioned again, town meeting is next Monday. There will be nothing on 555 at, at the town meeting. So I'm just letting people know again that there's nothing being discussed at town meeting in regards to this. So just thought I was told to mention that. So I just thought I would mention that. Again, again, thank you, everybody. And at this point, if somebody would like to make a motion.
Make a motion to shut the meeting down.
Okay. Josh just made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second. Karen?
Karen is second. We'll start with Karen.
Aye.
Uh, Jason?
Is this to, I'm sorry, I lost signal for a little bit. Is this to adjourn?
Yeah.
Aye.
Okay, Scott?
Aye.
Uh, David? And then Josh?
Yeah, but I.
I know. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Hey, everyone. Have a good night.
Thanks so much.
Good night.